So raise your right hand and repeat that for me. I state your name.
I, Mary Lou Powers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
And during such time.
That I am an appointed official.
That I am an appointed official.
For the city of Galt.
For the city of Galt.
I will faithfully discharge the duty.
I will faithfully discharge the duty.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Well, we're not going to let you rest, okay? We're going to just move right into the meeting.
Could I just say a little something first?
Sure.
I promise it'll be short and sweet, but I do want to thank my family for coming out. My two sisters, Skookey and Tammy, my son, Nathan, my brother-in-law, Dan, and my great nephew, Zachary, my coworkers, some members of my board, a lot of my friends here who have supported me all through, the thick and thin of being here in Galt. I want to tell you all that love and respect is the glue that keeps us all together, and I thank you all very much for your support. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into public comment. I think we have some speakers.
We do. Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, "Members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker." John Slaughterback?
John Slaughterback, I live in the city of Galt. I'd like to say right out first that I hope that my pessimistic outlook, I'm wrong, I hope things are different than what I see, but I do have something to say tonight, but I hope that my pessimistic outlook is wrong. Freedom of speech acts as a safety valve. Opposition serves a vital social function to offsetting or improving a normal process of bureaucratic decay. Freedom of speech and the process of accountability that follows it have a significant impact in the quality of governance of a country. The deterioration of government begins almost always by decay of its principles. The only thing necessary for a triumph of evil for good men to do, for good man is to do nothing. George Washington, the first president of the United States, said, "Occupants of public offices love power and are prone to abuse it." This city contracted with West Yost to do a feasibility study. I have the manual here. Feasibility study. This study provides a bi- a buffer, well, let me read it. It's chapter seven, page two. "The existing reclamation area that surrounds the Galt wastewater treatment plant provides a valuable buffer against encroachment towards the wastewater treatment plant. This is a distinct feature and benefit of the reclamation area that should remain into the future. Development encroachment towards wastewater treatment plant facilities generally results in increased efforts and capital investments towards odor control, noise reduction, screening to reduce visual impact, increased security measures, and installation of other onsite improvements. One of these additional onsite improvements will be the warehousing of bio solids. The handling of dried bio solids will introduce airborne particles into the atmosphere. The drying beds weren't designed for the anticipation that there would be a senior development adjacent to the sewer plant. When we evaluate the senior development, we must remember to include the church property just south and parallel to the sewer plant it will develop also. Bio solids application on city-owned land will have to be suspended. Cost of off hauling bio solids hundreds of thousands of dollars. The residents, the residents of the city have been fighting a battle with political action committees sponsored by the developer and other special interest groups for fourteen years, and each election year, the same battle repeats itself. If this city were to ever develop in this location, the impacts to the sewer plant would not be obvious in the beginning stages of its development, but within five years they would manifest theirselves. The general plan is setting at Laffco in Limbo, just waiting until the November election. These appointments are just a means of coun- for council to gain an advantage in the November election. This wouldn't be as much of a concern if council would state one way or the other how you, how you're going to address this wastewater problem. It seems as though each year we go back and battle this same problem again. These appointments are part, I believe, of council's plan to elect candidates they know will vote and add a supplement to the general plan with the hopes of obtaining an approval from Laffco for a senior development adjacent to the sewer plant. This is one example of an unfair, in today's low tide news center, Mary Lou Powers got some free advertising. Other candidates should call Marty Wilbur, the publisher, and ask for some equal free advertising also. This is just one example of an unfair advantage when council thoroughly appointed person to council when there are only six meetings remaining before the November election, and these appointees get all of the billing.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
That's all I have under public comment.
Oh, okay. All right.
I have, like to take a second just to have the chief of police come up and introduce a new employee.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and mayor, and members of the community, I'd like to take a moment to introduce our newest employee at the police department, Lieutenant Brian DeSousi. Brian comes to us with twenty-six years of service in a variety of different law enforcement agencies and different duties. He's got a wealth of experience, particularly in the areas that we are needing to replace. Longtime employee Ken Erickson, areas in budgeting and administrative roles. So I'd just like to introduce him to everybody. Some of you may have already met him. He's been filling the position for about three months, and so I just want to welcome Brian formally.
Well, thank you, chief. I wanted to thank the chief for appointing me. It's a great honor to be working in the city of Galt. Great community, great department. Chief has done a great job. I've worked in law enforcement for twenty-six years, and the chief is truly committed to the community, really cares about the department, and so does all the employees. So again, I'm proud to be a member of the community, a great community. I've met a lot of community members so far, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, our next item is the information consent calendar. Liz, you'd read off those four items, please.
Okay, item number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular adjourned meeting of August fourth, two thousand and ten. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, acceptance of public improvements for two oh one Fourth Street, AKA Oddfellows or Brewster Building. And number four, Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Memorandum of Understanding State After-School Education and Safety Program.
Okay. Any questions or comment? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None? We'll call vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember Haines?
Aye.
Haines?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Next item, schedule matters.
Galt Parks Master Plan Update Mitigated Negative Declarations.
Good evening, mayors and city council members. Tonight, we are, will be presenting the Park Master Plan Update and also the NegDEC. At this time, I'd like to introduce Kate Kirsch, the city's consultant from Foothill Associates.
Thank you, boy. Um, do I need to do something to cause it to appear on the, it should come up.
You just give it a minute.
All right. Excellent. Okay, can people hear me all right over the microphone? Doesn't sound very loud to me, so, yes?
Let her make an adjustment. Here.
Is this any better? Yes, that's better. All right, um, well, thank you very much for that introduction, boys. Good evening to the mayor, vice mayor, council members, and members of the community of the city of Galt. We've been working on this project for a couple of years now, including preparation of the Parks Master Plan Update and the related SECA environmental documents, and we're here tonight to give you a quick overview of what's been done to date so far, review the public participation process, which was quite extensive, a quick summary of the recommendations in the master plan and implementation strategies, and then also to give you a quick summary of the findings of the mitigated negative declaration. So you can see the project plan up here, that little red box at the very bottom means we're finished, basically. This is our last, um, time to address this in the project plan. We've come all the way from a variety of different public involvement processes through the, looking at facilities that are here, looking at what the community needs, getting a lot of input through this pretty extensive outreach timeline, beginning a couple of years ago with, um, a website. We had an ad hoc committee that met four times throughout the process of developing the master plan. We did surveys, we had community workshops. You can see, here we are, pretty much today, following the conclusion of the public review process for the master plan and NegDEC, which concluded in, in July of this year. I should point out that a year ago, in May, a year ago May, council did hear the presentation of the Parks Master Plan and took public comment at that point. Those comments were all interspersed into the document, and then that is the document that went forward into the SECA review process. To kind of recap the extensive public review, we did have two community workshops back in May and August of oh eight, and in those workshops, we focused on really trying to get an understanding of the community's vision for Galt parks, also where the priorities for limited spending would be, looking forward to what the recreation trends might be, because those are always changing as the community is changing, and then looking at specific preferences for programs, recreation programs, as well as the physical facilities where those programs are conducted. We also did concepts for three different park sites as part of the community workshop process. The city also undertook a pretty extensive phone survey of all city residents. Over twenty-five hundred calls were made to get three hundred and seventy completed surveys, which represented a plus or minus five percent margin of error to result in a ninety-five percent confidence level that the survey findings did in fact represent the view of the community, and that survey was available in both English and Spanish. To supplement that phone survey, there was also a written survey that was available on a website, as well as handed out at a whole variety of different public events. It was at the library, it was given out at the Parks and Rec Department counter booth at the Galt Festival, the community center, given out to all the people who participated in the recreation programs. And so we took that, that input with the phone survey and kind of tried to get a really comprehensive view of what people wanted and felt was important. We mentioned the ad hoc committee earlier. It was a nine-member committee representing a variety of different perspectives within the community, and they met four times throughout the planning process, beginning in April oh eight and concluding in January oh nine. And then finally, as I mentioned, we had another opportunity for public input at the council meeting in May of oh nine. So the master plan contains a large variety of recommendations, and the basis for how those recommendations was derived included looking at the inventory of the existing facilities and programs, so what's kind of the current situation. We also looked at demographic trends and projections, so how do we think the community is going to change moving forward? We talked about and established what's the level of service that the city wants to have for the recreation facilities that it provides to its residents, and then we analyzed how the existing parks measure up against that desired level of service. We took a lot of input from the community workshop and surveys, the ad hoc committee and staff, and boiled all that down, basically, to come up with a relative prioritization for implementation, and then looked at funding availability to further inform the recommendations. I mentioned there's a relative priority assigned to everything, and this kind of gives you a picture of what we're looking at, A, within three years, B, seven years, C, ten years, and D, things that were further out, and further out than ten years. And then for all the things that fell within the ten-year timeframe, we did a comprehensive ten-year capital improvement plan, looking at costs as well as revenue sources, and for that ten-year plan, it includes about one point six million dollars worth of recommended improvements for existing parks and facilities, and then there are fourteen point three for new park development, and you'll see that the later phase of Walker Park and the Haushilt site were excluded because they are beyond the ten-year timeframe. But one point seven million in open space and trail recommendations, and then there are a number of recommendations related to programs and administrative actions that are essentially part of the operational budget and not a separate capital expense. The cost projections were based on a ten-year planning horizon with the recognition that trying to do, um, cost projection and revenue projections beyond ten years is really sort of pointless, as we've all seen, I think, in the last three to three and a half years, how things can change dramatically from what you're planning, so we limited it to a ten-year planning horizon. We did coordinate with the general plan in terms of the growth assumptions. The total projected non-capital cost over the next ten years, and that would be salaries, benefits, all the things that aren't related to making physical improvements at park facilities, is about fifty-five point eight million, and capital improvements is about forty-six point seven, which includes about twenty-nine million dollars worth of improvements for new parks that would be built if growth occurs within the community as projected. All the different sources that provide revenue to implement the various items that were recommended in the master plan were also looked at, and projections were done over the next ten years. These include all the park and recreation fees that are charged, not just for people participating in programs, but also for facility rentals. As you probably all know, the Galt market is a significant contributor of funding for parks and recreation within the city. We also looked at the assessment districts, because some of the funds generated through the assessment districts are also related to parks care. Looked at general fund, grants, prior development impact fees, meaning impact fees that had been collected already on prior development that were waiting to be spent on new improvements. We looked at what new development impact fees might potentially be generated if growth occurs as projected. Then we also looked at and recommended some other sources in order to provide more revenue, including the potential for charging fees on different facilities that in the past perhaps hadn't been made available for public use and rental. Looking at adjustments to the assessment districts so that they are keeping pace with whatever inflation factor is being realized in all of the maintenance activities that are associated with those assessment districts. We also explored cost avoidance as a really important way to be fiscally sound, and suggested sponsorships, donations, potential site leases, and even advertising as ways to bring more money into the city for parks and recreation. So as I mentioned, the document was really completed, the master plan document, in May of last year. We then went into the SECA environmental review process, because as a document that's going to require action, public action to approve and adopt, we needed to comply with SECA regulations in that regard. And it was determined that in an initial study, mitigated negative declaration was the appropriate level of environmental document. We went through the requisite thirty-day public review and comment period, between June and July of this past year, I think June ninth to July eighth. During that time, there were only really four review letters that were received, and they're briefly summarized here. We had one letter from the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, who had actually worked very closely with us, and I'd like to express my thanks to them. As we prepared the document, as you're probably all aware, there's been a lot of new SECA language evolving around greenhouse gas emissions and those kinds of things, so she was really great in helping us make sure we incorporated all that. It was sort of a breaking news kind of situation, it seemed like every time we write something, there was a new regulation we needed to comply with. So she gave us a few minor edits and clarifications that were made. Sac County Department of Transportation actually reviewed it and had no comments on the document. Got a couple of comments from the Sacramento area bicycle advocates, some very complimentary comments regarding the city's focus on bicycle trails and the recommendation in the master plan to make sure that there's non-vehicular access to new parks, and they also added a comment that encouraged the city to consider improving non-vehicular access to existing parks as well, which is really more related to transportation planning side of it, but nevertheless, it was an appropriate comment in response to the, to the master plan and NegDEC. And then, of course, we got the standard letter from the state clearinghouse indicating that no state agencies had responded or had, had comments. So following the conclusion of that comment period and response to those comments, we prepared the requisite mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, which is now part of the environmental document. And that is what is before you this evening, both the master plan and the environmental document for your review and approval.
Counsel? Comments, questions?
I have no comments.
No? Don? Have none? I do have spoke to staff, and I understand what you're, what you're trying to do, and I agree. Anything you wanted to add, or?
I, I believe you have to open that for a public hearing, yeah?
Doesn't say that, we can.
Um, it'd be my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it's not in there, but we, I think that's a good idea. I will open it up for a public hearing. Any members of the public, the audience wishing to come to the podium and ask a question or make a comment? None? Close of the public hearing? No other comments from counsel? I'll ask for a motion.
I move to adopt the mitigated negative declaration mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Do we need to take each one of these items separately?
We can do them together.
Okay.
We can do them all together.
Oh, we can do them all together? A nice little move.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None? We'll call vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Haines?
Aye.
Councilwoman Haines?
Aye.
Councilwoman Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye.
Do you have the next item, boys?
Two thousand and nine Parks and Recreation Public Facilities Fee Up.
As we're changing seats, I'll just mention who will be speaking next and addressing the fee adjustment for the new impact fee, Victor Erzick. But unfortunately, fortunately, when you do do a update on your Park Master Plan, unfortunately costs do go up, but at this time, I'll turn it over to Victor, and then I would just like to add something at the conclusion of his report.
Good evening, members of the council, city staff, and members of the audience. My name is Victor Erzick, and I'm with Goodwin Consulting Group, and I'm here to provide you with a brief presentation on the recreation impact fee update. As you may recall, we had brought this to your attention earlier this year when we were presenting the road, the NEA, and the capital facilities fees. At that time, the city's master plan was in draft form, and we recommended that we fill that fee item and revisit it once the master plan has been completed. It is now adopted, and so we're back to present this to you again. Purpose of the fee, basically, is to align the fee with the master plan. So what we've incorporated into the calculation of the fee are the level of service that is presented in your master plan. Also, this fee is a capital facilities fee, so it's going to fund parks and recreation improvements. It does not fund ongoing operation and maintenance costs. This fee will also consolidate your two park fee zones. You currently have a separate park fee in your NEA area, and then another one for the rest of the city. This park fee will consolidate those two zones. Now, this park fee is being adopted pursuant to the Mitigation Fee Act, also referred to as AB sixteen hundred. And one of the big requirements of AB sixteen hundred is that there is a reasonable relationship between the amount of the fee and development on which you're levying that fee, and we've, we've ensured in our calculations that this is the case. For example, you cannot fund existing deficiencies in your park program through developer fees and put that on the backs of future development. We allocated costs on a fair share basis based on average persons per household, because residents are the primary users of parks in the city. And as I mentioned, we applied the master plan service standards in calculating this fee, so this includes park provision at five acres per thousand residents, open space at five acres per thousand residents, trails at one mile per four thousand residents. We've incorporated an aquatic center, a community center. We've incorporated the costs for the master plan itself, and we've also included administration and contingency costs. And so the total cost for park facilities out to build out comes to eighty-six point eight million. And here is the result of that. The proposed fee comes to ten thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars per single family unit. Now, if you compare that to current fee at eight thousand and nine dollars, that's an increase of two thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars, or an increase of about thirty-six percent over the current fee. Now, with the economic times being what they are, the city staff is recommending that the fee be adopted on a graduate basis, basically increasing the fee very little when it becomes effective in November, so basically going from eight thousand and nine dollars up to eight thousand thirty-nine dollars. That's about a seventy-four percent, or that's seventy-four percent of the total amount, which is ten thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars for multi-family unit. It would increase from six thousand six hundred thirty dollars to six thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars, and then ultimately, when the new fee comes into full effect on July one, two thousand and twelve, it would go to seven thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars for multi-family unit. Now, there are several options you can, you can look at. For example, you can adopt the fee completely and have it implemented at the full rate in sixty days. You can phase it in over a number of years rather than the twenty-twelve. Or you can look at eliminating or adjusting some of the levels of amenities and improvements so as to reduce that impact fee. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions you may have.
Comments from counsel? We do need to go into an open public hearing. Would you prefer to hear from anybody in the audience first?
Mayor, I would just like to add one item. At last week's Park and Recreation Commission's meeting, the commission recommend, recommended to council to keep the current fee now, that we have now, rather than do the thirty-dollar end.
the thirty-dollar increase. So that's just for counsel's information.
Okay. We will now open the public hearing. Any members of the audience wishing... I see someone's already coming up to the front wishing to speak.
Running.
Running.
Mike Guttridge, Gemma Park Company. I noticed on the fee it was only going to go up in 2012. Well, let's look and see what we've done in 2009. We built one house. In 2010, as far as I know, we haven't built a house. 2011 would probably be about the same thing, because gentlemen and ladies, we can't, as a home builder in this town since nineteen eighty, we understand what it takes to build a house and what it costs. And as you know, your fees are fifty, sixty thousand dollars a house. Your improvement cost on a lot is about forty-five, fifty thousand. So you've got a hundred thousand dollars already tied up for why even put the land costs in. So to build a house in Galt today, you've got to be in that, if we're talking about a house in the seventeen hundred to twenty-one hundred square foot, you have to be in the marketplace at about three fifty, four hundred, and even that, you're probably losing money. So to look at this fee you got up here tonight, and you're saying, Mr. Developer, you're going to have another two thousand dollars on top of that in 2012. Remember, on my land down in Creekside, for to get my final map, it cost me two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think someplace in there, just to get my final map. Because what the city of Galt does, they appraise on the final map, not on the tenancy map. And there's a lot of difference there in cost. So then you add another ten thousand on top of that, and so now we've got not only what I just said, you got another ten thousand on top of that, and that's just the park fee. Remember what your transportation fee is and all the rest of the fees. So I think to look at this seriously, you've got to go back and look at some of the other fees that you've got and where we're going to go, because as they say right now, you're not building anything in the residential part of this city. So I, in fact, I just drove out tonight. I thought I'd just see what Hoffman was doing and Elliott was doing. They're growing grass like I am, weeds and grass and so on and so forth, and that doesn't create much, you know, much dollars for the city, I don't think. So I just think you ought to think about that before we make this judgment of going from in 2012 to an additional two thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? None? We'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from counsel?
I have a couple.
Vice Mayor?
I have a hard time supporting this fee increase at this time, even though we're looking at approving it for the year 2012. There's a big question marked in my mind as to what the economy is going to be like in 2012. And also, I don't think at this point, this is going to encourage jobs through growth to right up front say we're going to be increasing the fees. I think that we need to be, at this point, more competitive. There's no reason why, if the economy gets better, and I haven't gotten any reports that's predicting that to happen in the next couple of years, but suppose it does, there's no reason why the fees couldn't be looked at again. I want to send a message out to the business community that we want jobs in Galt, and I don't think approving this fee increase at this time will do that. And you look at ten thousand dollars, and that's just a small part of the fees that have to be paid. So at this point, I would say this is not the best in the best interest of the community.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I like the idea of gradually increasing it over the years, but I have to say that I don't see, we haven't seen any growth the last couple of years, and I think it's reasonable to say we're not going to see any in the next couple. I think this might be something that we would be best revisiting in two years to see where we sit in the, see where the economy sits. For the couple of homes you may build in the next couple of years and the few dollars you may gain, it isn't worth the effort and time right now to invest in it. So it'd be my recommendation, if anything, is to come back in 2012, revisit it. We've done an excellent job on this master plan. This is an important part. And hopefully, in two years, we may see some light at the end of the tunnel, but as it is now, things aren't looking as well as we'd like it to. So I don't see any real benefit to imposing these fees at this time, but most certainly, it's good to know that we have this plan in place and that we can fall back on it at a later date. And that would be my suggestion at this time.
I want to agree with all of my previous council members. I would like to readdress the fee increase in 2012 also.
Yeah, I agree, and I would go with Parks and Rec Committee actually said no increase, but I'd like to know also what happens if we don't. And I see the attorney is trying to get my attention there.
Mr. Mayor, before you call the question, I'd like to propose one other option for your consideration. What you have before you tonight is a new NEXUS report, a new study which has outlined facilities based upon your master plan, the cost of those facilities, and has come up with a fair and rational distribution of those costs, which would support the setting of a fee up to the ten thousand eight hundred sixty dollar level. Now, I understand that the council may not wish to set that fee this evening, but the NEXUS report gives you the ability to set a fee anywhere from zero up through that number. So if you're comfortable with the NEXUS report that has been prepared, what I would recommend is that you adopt the resolution before you with the modification to establish the fee at the current level, or if you so desire, some other level. And I'm prepared to give you those revisions to that resolution if that concept is acceptable to the council.
So there'd be no automatic adjustment in 2012. In order for the fee to ever be increased in the future, we'd have to come back, put the city council, just make, so next time we come back, you don't have to go through the whole NEXUS study report and everything else again. You've already adopted the study. You agree with the facilities. You just don't agree with the cost at this time, and you can revisit the cost at a later date.
Okay, I agree.
That's exciting, Ron.
That's why we have you guys there.
So, Mr. Mayor, do you want me to indicate to you precisely what the changes to the resolution would be?
Yes, I think we have a nod from all four of us, and we agree.
Okay. The change to the resolution would be, if you go to section three, which is titled Recreation Impact Fees, the first half of the sentence would stay the same, so it would be effective on November 1, 2010. The Recreation Impact Fee for new residential development projects shall be as set forth in the below table. Strike the remainder of that sentence in three. And then in the table that's below, strike the third column, which says fee effective on July 1, 2012. And then under single family, insert the number eight zero zero nine, which is your current fee for single family. Under multi-family, insert the number six six three zero, which is your current fee for multi-family. And then on the top, where it says fee from November 1, 2010 through June 30, 2012, strike through June 30, 2012. So the effect of those changes would be to establish a fee effective November 1 at the exact same level, but it would be based upon the NEXUS report that's before you this evening. Is there any questions?
Is that the motion that we would be making?
So that'd be my recommendation, yes.
That's right.
All right, so if I make a motion to accept this two thousand nine Parks and Recreation Public Facilities Fees update, I would do that with the adoption, with the resolution, with modifications to the current, new current level, if I understand you correctly? Or do you want me to read all out for everything that you've just indicated?
No. You can, if you wanted to move ahead, you could say to move to adopt the resolution, adopting a revised Recreation Impact Fee applicable to new development as amended by the city attorney. I think the record's clear.
You're going to withdraw the current, you're going to amend?
So basically, you have a resolution in your packet. I've read the amendments into the record, so the motion would be to adopt that resolution with the amendments that I read. And if you wanted, you could just say so moved.
So moved.
What he said.
So moved. Is there a motion?
I make a motion. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? None? Roll call vote, please.
Hi. Don, ahead. Um, Haynes?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Regular calendar, next item, city attorney's office. I believe you have four items here. Mr. Rudolph?
I'm sorry about that, Mr. Mayor.
Our next item is vacancy on city council.
Um, Mr. Mayor, council members, we're getting to be experts in this area. As you have been informed by this point in time, on August 5th, Darrell Player did in fact submit his resignation, which was effective on the same day. That triggered a 30-day period of time for the city council to either make an appointment to fill that seat or to take no action and allow the matter, allow the seat to remain vacant until the general election in November. The 30 days runs on September 4th, so if you did not act this evening and you did not call a special election between this evening and September 4th, you would no longer have an opportunity to fill that seat by way of appointment. Because of the fact that the council has already gone through the process of soliciting people that are interested in filling that seat, if the council did so desire to make an appointment, it'd certainly be appropriate for you to move ahead this evening with an appointment, if that's your desire. And if the council does desire to make an appointment, as I did at the last meeting, I'd recommend that you follow Robert's Rules of Order, where you would take nominations. The nominations do not require a second, and then after nominations are closed, you would vote on the nominations in the order received until one of the candidates received a majority vote. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
It's, this is a decision that council needs to make, so, counsel?
Do we want to give the public a chance to speak on it before we talk, or?
Well, I think first of all, we need to make a decision with what we're going to do.
Well, my opinion hasn't changed from the last, from the last meeting, but we've got four people up here. I think we're quite capable. I think we would have a quorum. The argument last time was is that three people wouldn't present a quorum, and there could be issues that might arise. But I think with four council members, I don't see any need to bring a fifth one in at this time so close to an election. So it'd be my opinion that we pass on it and not appoint anybody at this time.
Okay. Any other comments from any other council members?
Well, I would weigh in that I would like to have a full council. You never know what is going to happen in the future, and I prefer to appoint someone to fill the vacancy.
Marla?
Well, this puts me in a real weird spot, but my thought right now would be not to appoint someone else.
I will go with majority, because even if I were to say we would fill it, it just puts it to a tie, and we would just be further discussing it. So I will vote with the majority of Don and Mary Lou to not fill the position at this time.
Okay.
I do have some speaker sheets, so I would want, I guess, see if they still want to speak.
Sure.
If they have submitted speaker sheets.
Do you want to call their names off and just ask if they would like to speak?
Yes, and I put them away. Maddie Shepherd, would you still like to speak on the issue? Okay.
My name is Maddie Shepherd Kretounis, and I do reside in the city. With regret and disappointment that the council has spoken that they will not have, fill the council seat. And what, the reason I say with regret is that there are a number of people here that came under the auspices that that would occur tonight, although we knew that that was also an option not to. So I'm just voicing my opinion, the fact that I really truly feel that it is an injustice to the community to not have a full council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Timothy Corcoran, would you still like to speak on the issue? Okay. Al Baldwin?
Al Baldwin, I'm always concerned about Galt. Appreciate the audience. I can tell that this council is drinking water out of a half-full glass, not a full. And that's good, but you only got five more meetings, six more meetings. If you brought one person on, I'm suggesting that you brought the whole thing on. Money isn't an issue, it's just a matter of having a hundred percent council. I didn't get a chance to even say my background. I figured, I assumed, and you know what you do when you assume something, that you knew my background, but apparently, maybe that had something to do with it, maybe it didn't. I've had numerous years, numerous years. Ninety percent of my background has been in management with the retail trade, with the hotel, wholesale trade, and I've dealt with budgets, I've dealt with hiring, the firing, laying off. I've gone the whole gamut. Many people ask me, why didn't you run for council throughout the years? They say, gee whiz, you just want to do a temporary. Well, I don't mind answering that. I investigated it when I first came to Galt. I moved into Guttridge's new homes up there, and a lot of people said, yes, this town needs this, this town needs that. Why don't you run? I said, well, let me look into it. And I did. I took a good survey of the council people that were on the council at that time. I found the good and the not-so-good. And I decided, after listening to them and a lot of their challenges, and also observing that when a council member leaves up there, they never, very rarely, if they ever do, come back to any meetings and give any input about what they would like to see in Galt. And after analyzing this for a long period of time, I thought, well, what could I do to keep this thing going if I wasn't on the council? I decided to take the approach that I can still do my thing. One person can make a difference. I was that one person. At that time, I wanted to make a difference. I wanted Galt to be a better place than I found it. I do this anywhere I go, any job I get, any assignment that I'm assigned, I try to do the very best with what I've got. And so I decided not to run, but yet still be involved with Galt, with the council, with the city, with organizations throughout Galt to make this city a better-looking place, a better place to live, and also, as time went on, a better place for people to have better character. And that better character thing, I think, was the cherry on top of the cake, because I'll tell you, that's been one of the best things that I've seen Galt develop right now, is the character of Galt. I've done my best, I passed everything that you wanted. We got a letter that said, come on down, and you're going to be looked at, and I did, and others did. Maddie did, Timothy did, so many others. The hopes were brought up, and they were just let down. I totally understand where Don's coming from, because he's got a commitment, he's got an opinion. got an opinion, and that's great, and I respect that, I really do. Uh, I just think that you should operate with the full glass right now, so that you can enjoy everything. And there's another, other ways of looking at things up there that you haven't really explored yet. With only five or six meetings to go, I personally believe I could contribute very much to what this council, this city, and the staff even, would like to see in a council person. I believe I have the traits to do that. I'm not out for any kind of political, um, aspirations after this, and I will still keep coming to these council meetings and still do my thing. I'm just suggesting that I think you should consider filling the whole thing, getting it out there, letting other people see how you really feel, and being equal, and also being honest. And I just think that, not just me, but the others should be all considered strongly and enthusiastically, as Mary Lou was, to be a hundred percent on this council. If you want experience, the others have it, I have it, it's not a matter of experience, I think it's just a matter of decision, and it's not the city that's deciding, it's the council that's deciding. I'm just saying that I got what you want, so do others, but if we're gonna compete, I'm one step ahead of them. Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Al.
Alan, we do appreciate all your input, and, and over the years, you really have been, and still contribute to any change that we have coming to the city, 'cause your, your opinion is valued, so I do wanna thank you for that.
Um, I don't have any more speaker sheets, I do have letters from every, all the candidates, and I won't call them up, but anybody who wants to speak, come on up Ted. Um, anyone who wants to speak can come up and just state your name for the record, um...
While, while Ted's coming up, can, it would be, uh, would it be all right, can I ask, what would be the cost to put another person up here? I'm, I'm not for it, obviously, but what would it cost to put somebody up here, as far as money-wise, for the next three months?
Um, do about fifteen hundred bucks a month, times two and a half, it'd be about, it'd be...
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Is there an ink reading?
I, I have an idea what it would cost, I just wanted to give the city manager an opportunity to answer the question.
Yeah, there's the, um, the monthly, um, stipend that the council receives, and then the insurance costs. And insurance costs vary depending on the individual, whether it's single coverage, um, double coverage, or family coverage.
Right. But an estimate would be, what, about forty, forty-five?
Between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars.
A month.
Yeah.
Go ahead, thank you. Uh, mayor and council, congratulations to Mary Lou for being appointed. I guess I missed an opportunity at the last meeting, if I'd have known I could've got here, I would've, uh, came and presented, uh, what I gave to you in the letter. Uh, I think that there, you're missing a point, and Don, in all due respect, let me tell you what I think's missing when you don't put the fifth person there, and that is, we're a representative democracy, anytime we're one person short, that's one twentieth of the community that's not represented, and therefore eighty percent start making the decision. And so anytime that you're, if you're short, then you're not fully represented. But anyway, I'm here, uh, I would like to let people know that I am interested in, uh, to serve on the interim, and I would let people know that I will try and run in November. Uh, I was the city manager here for ten and a half years, I have thirty-four years worth of local government experience, I've managed five cities in three states, Utah, Colorado, and California. Um, I probably have more institutional memory for Galt than any person in Galt at this point in time, from the ten and a half years. Uh, I think that it's important that Galt try and get the best people, and the people that will serve the majority of the people. One of the problems with local government is sometimes we become very narrow in our view, and a lot of times, special interest groups or small groups sometimes ask for things that are probably not in the best interest of the city. Uh, in Colorado, I managed a city that had almost the same demographics as Galt, it was about twenty to twenty-five thousand, it was a, a city by the name of Brighton, it's twenty miles due north of Denver. And while I was, uh, there, there were a couple of things that, uh, I was able to do. I concentrated on economic development, I concentrated on development of infrastructure within the city. And in nineteen ninety-three, the Denver Business Journal awarded Brighton the Deal of the Year in Real Estate for the city, because we acquired a one point five million square foot Kmart distribution center. We located the county, uh, offices in Brighton for Adams County on property that the city owned, and we built a reverse osmosis water plant, which had been unheard of in Colorado, because Brighton is on surface water, it's not on tributary water. Everyone told us it wouldn't work, it was a success, and it turned out to be very, very good. Brighton was also awarded in nineteen ninety-three the Community of the Year from the Governor's Office for Economic Development for Cities Under Twenty-Five Thousand Population. Also, I served for two years as the Adams County Economic Development Director, and Adams County is a large county there, and I not only served one year, they asked me to serve an additional year. And, uh, we also received a special award from ICM, the Council Award for Public Safety for Community Law Enforcement and for the way that we approach the public. What I wanted you to understand is, is I do have a wealth of knowledge on local government, and I think that I could've been of value to you, even in the short run that, that you have. My purpose for running for the city is, is that I've been on an appointed basis all my life. I thought it would be interesting to sit on the elected side and see if, whether or not the, the abilities and the experience would be of benefit on the council side, which I believe that it is, and I appreciate the opportunity to submit the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Anyone else?
I think someone's coming down the podium right now.
Good evening, my name is Sean Farmer. I wasn't here actually to speak on this topic at first, but I just felt compelled to come up here. First off, I would like to commend Councilman Haynes and surprisingly, Councilwoman Powers for basically upholding democracy. Most of you officials up there have all ran, um, and been elected by the people, and that's part of the process. You, you, you go out, you, you meet the people, you, you tell people what you're about and what your, what your beliefs are, and people vote you in, and that's part of the process. And I think that for you to be appointed, and not to take away from what you're, what you're gonna be doing while you're in there, Mary Lou, but when you're appointed, it is, it isn't like a fulfilled, um, process. I mean, we, as the public, were allowed to vote in our council members to represent us, in, in hopes that they will represent what we want in our best interest. So for people just to get appointed because they're an associate, or they think, oh, this guy's a good guy, and he's got a lot of experience, and so on and so forth, just to put him in, I think is completely against the process. I, I just don't understand. I know a lot of people have, went up and they're interested in running, and a lot of them are very experienced, and, um, one of them will most likely get the seat in the election process, and they'll be able to then demonstrate what they've been up here telling them the people that they're all about and what they're capable of. But I think that, um, not to take anything away from those people, but, uh, you know, you just have to go through the process, I mean, that's what it's all about. I mean, there's, there's more than capable of four of you up here to vote, I think you'd be cheating the public on voting on any important issues between now and election. If you were to fill the other seats with appointed people and then vote on important issues, you'd be cheating the public, because they would only have two or three elected officials in there representing, and the other people would just be people that maybe the people didn't want in there. So, I mean, you know, I'm, I apologize if I offend anybody by that, but it's just, this is what this country is founded on, was, is election. You're elected by the people for the people, not by your fellow peers for your fellow peer, for your fellow peers. So I commend you for voting the way you did, I, I was surprised it went that way, but, um, I'm, I'm sure a lot of people in the audience feel the same way. Um, but, uh, good luck to all you guys running in November, and hopefully, you know, the best person gets the seat, but thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. More other speaker? Mike?
Good evening. I have a different view than Sean did. I, uh, I think every topic that is brought up to the council is an important topic, 'cause it has to do with our community. So let me say good evening to the city council, staff, and the citizens of Galt. I am also, uh, I believe that you should be working with a full council. My name is Mike Singleton, I'm fifty years old, some of you may not think I'm that old, but I am. I've lived in the community for about fourteen years. Let me start by saying, never judge a book by its cover, until you've read the whole book. I may not be your typical-looking, uh, person to run for city council, but I have a good head on my shoulders, and know how to think things through, with an open mind, and make unbiased decisions. As I've stated before, it takes a village to raise a community. We need to bring this council together, uh, to work together as a team for the people of Galt in the best interest of Galt. Uh, I think I would've been the best choice, uh, for the current open seat, uh, 'cause I am just a rabid citizen, I work in the community, I volunteer in the community, and, uh, and I think I know what's best for the community, but I deal with the people in our, our community on a daily basis. I'm chairman of the Board of Crime Stoppers, have been for the last four years. I work with the, uh, uh, Galt, uh, Crime Prevention Coordinator, uh, for Galt PD and Neighborhood Watch Programs, in an effort to fight crime in our town. I'm also on the Galt Public Safety Committee, disappointed last year by the city council, by Mr. Haynes. And, uh, I've been with CERT, which is the Disaster Preparedness, uh, program, rescue program for, uh, CSD for the last year and a half. In two thousand nine, I completed my education as a certified EMT in Sacramento County. I own a business in town and work hard like everybody else in our community. Through my service in the community, I have had many opportunities to speak with citizens of Galt, and feel that I have a good grasp of what they, they want to see happen in our community. Uh, life can be difficult serving on the community, and I'm, I'm aware of this. I've worked hard since I was fifteen years old, and now, uh, from what life's experience has given me, I, I am ready, uh, I was ready to take the challenge of working on, uh, with the, uh, current council members. I know, uh, I know you can't please everybody all the time, and you guys know that just as well as anybody else, uh, but I believe there's almost always a compromise. Uh, by looking at both sides of an issue with an open mind, this will help in making a smart and right decision for our community. So I know, uh, the current, uh, city council would be making the right decision by appointing me to the city council seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other speakers? None?
Okay.
Well, I wanna thank all of you that sent your letters in of intent and wanted to volunteer, and for those of you that got up and spoke tonight, uh, as some of you got up and said it always doesn't go the way you want it to, we know that, but, uh, we have four council members, and, uh, we'll move on, and I think, I believe, can't speak for you guys, but I know that the four of us are gonna, we're gonna pull ourselves together and hold this, uh, council, we're gonna hold us all accountable, and, uh, we will do what we gotta do, do the right thing. So, we will move to, uh, our next item, please.
Okay, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Galt, adding chapter two point six zero of the Galt Municipal Code regarding conflicts of interest, conflict of interest guidelines, and a resolution of the city council of the city of Galt designating filing positions and creating disclosure categories for conflict of interest.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, as the city clerk indicated, there are two items, uh, before you this evening for consideration and possibly adoption. Uh, the first is the ordinance, the conflict of interest ordinance, which basically sets up the, the framework for the city's conflict of interest, uh, system. It sets up the process by which the council determines which of the employees within the city, uh, are in positions where their jobs may present a potential, uh, economic conflict of interest, and it requires, uh, those employees, along with the ones established under the government code, essentially the city council, planning commissioners, um, city manager, myself, and the treasurer, to file Form 700s. Um, so that's the, the framework of the, the ordinance. Uh, the second, uh, item is the resolution, and the resolution sets forth, uh, precisely which positions within the city are required to file Form 700s, and, uh, and why they are required, uh, by virtue of identifying particular disclosure categories. The disclosure categories are basically, uh, those officials that, uh, are in positions where they have contracting or purchasing authority, if they're in positions where their jobs may affect, uh, real property, the value of real property, if they're in positions where they have regulatory authorities, such as our building officials, um, our code enforcement folks, or if they're in positions where they have broad, general decision-making authorities, such as our, our department heads. So those are the folks within our organization that, uh, will be required to file Form 700s if the ordinance and the resolution are adopted this evening. State law requires us to go through this process every two years to make sure that we have appropriately identified people in our organization that, uh, should be making these financial disclosures. So the list that is in, uh, Exhibit A, has been reviewed by all of your department heads, the city manager, and myself, and the ordinance, as well as the resolution, are recommended for your adoption this evening. Be happy to respond to any questions you have.
Any comments on the ordinance?
Nope.
None? No comments, no questions? Uh, last for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, ordinance of the city council, uh, updating the, uh, conflict of interest guidelines and resolution for the city council and the city, publicly.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
A second.
And seconded. Any further discussions? No? Call for a vote?
Vice Mayor Payne?
Hi.
Councilwoman Haynes?
Hi.
Councilwoman Powers?
Hi.
Mayor Shalton?
Hi. Okay. Uh, next item, Steve? Oh, I'm sorry, were you gonna read that?
Um, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Galt repealing and replacing chapter nine point three eight of the Galt Municipal Code regarding special events.
Um, Mr. Mayor and council members, the, um, under the, uh, the direction of the, the city manager, uh, the police chief, the parks and rec director, and, uh, myself, review the current special event, uh, ordinance that the city has in place under the municipal code, uh, to determine whether or not that ordinance, uh, still reflected the, the needs of the community. And some of the problems that we identified with, uh, the current ordinance is that it does not regulate events on private property. So if there is a large event that is going to occur on private property that is potentially going to generate, uh, traffic, safety, noise issues, uh, there's not an opportunity for the city to, uh, receive advance notice of that event and to establish some rules in order to ensure that, uh, those events on private property are held in a safe and orderly manner. So that was the first problem that was identified. The second one is that the, the current ordinance regulates events on city property, and most of the times when, when people are going to utilize city property, they're going to come and they're going to rent our facilities. And so it became apparent to us that we might have a, a duplication of effort, where someone would come in and they would be required to fill out a rental agreement for, say, the, uh, the Shabola Center, and then also go and get a special event permit. And it became clear to us that we really can take care of all of the concerns we have for the use of city property, just through the rental agreements for city property, or the use agreements for city property, without having an additional layer of a special event, uh, permit. The last concern that we had with the current ordinance is that it requires a special event permit under several scenarios. First is if the event's going to be attended by one hundred or more people, and that's pretty clear. But there's another provision that says, if it can reasonably be expected to become a hazard to the public, peace, health, safety... to the public peace, health, safety or general welfare as determined by the chief of police, fire chief or Parks and Rec director. Well, as a member of the public, it's really hard to read the ordinance and to be put on notice whether or not an event you're going to hold that might be under one hundred, might in fact fall under that particular category and therefore require a special event permit. So in crafting the new ordinance, what we were endeavoring to do was to come up with a program that was also a little clearer to the public as to when a special event permit is going to be required and when it's not going to be required. So the ordinance that is presented for your consideration this evening does a few things. First of all, um, it requires a special event permit whenever there's going to be an event that's expected to have an attendance of seventy-five or more people on private property. But why seventy-five? The number, you know, the number of concern frankly is still one hundred. But when somebody comes in and applies for a permit, they need to estimate what the crowd in attendance is going to be. And so, um, we felt that by establishing a slightly no, uh, lower number that even if someone was being a little bit of, uh, a little bit conservative in their estimate, we would really capture those events that, um, had a one hundred plus people in attendance. There's several exemptions that are also built into this ordinance. Um, the first exemption is that any event that is being held on government property, uh, is exempt. As I indicated earlier, if we're talking about city property, uh, we have the ability to control events on our property through rental and use agreements. If the events are on school district property, then, uh, we certainly leave it to the school district to appropriately, uh, control and supervise events on their property. So we didn't feel that there was a need to regulate events on government property. The second area, uh, that is exempt is our events that are being held on property owned by churches or other religious organizations. And basically what we were trying to do, uh, in this scenario is to make sure that we did not inadvertently require special event permits for weddings, funerals, other, uh, religious, uh, religious events. So the way the exemption is structured is that if it is a, uh, an event on church property, if it's fully contained within the church's property, uh, it relates to the, uh, to the religious organization and it's under their direct control and supervision, then they do not require a special event permit. If they have, if a church were to have an event, for example, where they were taking all of their parking area or a large portion of it and that's where the event was being held and thereby they were forcing all of the parking into the streets and surrounding neighborhoods, then in that scenario, it's not contained within their property and we do want an opportunity to, uh, to talk with them through the special event permit process and establish regulations to, uh, to make sure it's an orderly event. Additionally, if a church has a property and it's not being used for a church-related event, but they're leasing it out to a third party for a dancer or whatever it is, then they're really in no different scenario than any other kind of private business. And in that scenario, we would ask them also to come in for a special event, uh, permit. The other exemptions are, uh, if there are any buildings that already have a conditional use permit in place, then we don't need them to come in for a special event permit. And the reason for that is because if they've already had a, a conditional use permit, that means we've had an opportunity to evaluate their event and to impose conditions through the conditional use permit process to make sure that the use of that property is done in a, uh, in a safe and appropriate manner. So we've, we've recommended an exemption for buildings that have a conditional use permit. Finally, uh, there is an exemption for, uh, uses such as theaters, retail, restaurants, health clubs, schools. And you can have a, uh, a restaurant that might have more than, uh, seventy-five people, uh, eating at the restaurant and it's certainly not our intent to require a special event permit if the restaurant is filled to capacity. The same thing with theaters or health clubs or, uh, or private schools. And so that's the reason for, uh, that particular exemption. So really, the, the properties that are included, uh, or would be included under your new ordinance that are not included under your existing ordinance are going to be private residences where there is an event that has seventy-five or more people in attendance, uh, church facilities that don't fit in those exemptions that I identified, and other private facilities, uh, where there's going to be, uh, seventy-five people in attendance or greater who don't have a conditional use permit. The goal of this ordinance is not to prohibit the event, but to make sure that the events are held in a safe manner, that traffic is appropriately regulated, that, uh, there's appropriate security if it's needed, that noise is under control and that alcohol, if it's going to be served, is used in a, uh, safe and appropriate manner and kept from, uh, kept from minors. When a, um, when, when someone wants to come in for, or is required to come in for a special event permit, uh, the, the ordinance specifies the specific grounds for denial and they are very, uh, they are very, uh, limited in the ordinance. It's under section zero, seven, zero of, of your ordinance. Let me just turn to that for a moment. So basically if the police chief were to deny, uh, the permit, he would need to identify that either the information on the application is false. Uh, another example would be that, uh, there's another special event application that's been received and already approved and places the city in a situation where there's going to be undue traffic congestion or our police department would be stretched to a point where we would not be able to, uh, safely, uh, respond to both events if need be, uh, during that time, during the time that both events were scheduled. Um, so the, the grounds for denial are very limited. In the event that a application is denied, there is a right of appeal to the city council. The other things that we've, uh, built into the ordinance in an effort to try to minimize, uh, the inconvenience for those venues that might have regular events is that we have added a provision that allows for an annual permit. So if there is a business that is going to have regular events at their locale, they can come in and get one permit that covers them for the year, that establishes the, uh, the conditions and would most likely require, uh, some advance notice to the city, uh, a couple of days before the event occurred, that another event is coming up this Friday night or Saturday night. And all the conditions that were in that annual permit would apply to each one of those, those events. Um, the other opportunity also is for a property that does not have a conditional use permit to potentially seek a, a rezone and a conditional use permit, in which case they would be exempt from this ordinance. We want to also note that in the ordinance that's presented for your consideration, there is not a recommendation for fees to be imposed. This is not a money-making, uh, operation. In fact, it is not an area where the city will lose money because we're not even recommending that you recover the cost for reviewing the application. We feel that it's important enough from a traffic and safety standpoint that the city bear those costs, but have the opportunity to get advance notice of these events and establish appropriate, uh, rules. The other items that are added to this particular ordinance that are, are not in your current ordinance is there are some provisions, uh, that allow the chief of police to shut down any special event immediately if there is disorderly conduct. And that is identified, uh, in the ordinance. Um, and it, and it results in, uh, or it's items such as, you know, drunk and disorderly conduct, uh, fighting, if there are conditions of the special event permit that are being ignored. Those are the types of scenarios that allow the police chief to go in and immediately shut down the event in an effort to ensure that people are not hurt. Um, so that's an overview of, uh, of the ordinance that's presented for your consideration this evening. I don't know if the, uh, the manager, the chief have any additional comments that they'd like to add before we open it up for public, uh, input.
Jason, did you have a chance?
Oh, no idea. Okay, one item that, uh, that I, uh, did neglect to go over is, um, I believe that the ordinance that was, uh, sent out in your packet was not the, the, the prior, uh, was not the final ordinance that, uh, that we want to present for your consideration. And I did hand that out, uh, this evening and I have some additional copies that are available for any, uh, members of the public that want to look at it. Uh, the changes are frankly not, not very, uh, complex. The changes are in three areas. One is the Parks and Rec director, uh, has been removed from the process. He paid good money in order to get that accomplished. Uh, the, uh, the permit applica- permit applications would go directly to the chief. So that's one change. The second is that we've removed the obligation to, uh, provide insurance. Um, since the events occur on private property, there's not a need to, uh, protect public property such as when we rent our facilities. So it's really up to the discretion of the applicant whether they want to have insurance for their own events. So we've removed the insurance requirement from the ordinance. And the last thing is we revise the exemptions to, uh, the church property and to government property, but they were revised in the same manner as I described just a few minutes ago. We had initially, um, not, had a little bit more, uh, limitations on those exemptions and so we redrafted them as presented in your, in your packet this evening. So those are the only changes that were made from the time that your packet went out. Um, so with that, are there any other comments?
Um, I'll, I'll hold some of my comments after the, the, the public comment period. Just wanted to, um, reiterate what the city attorney said. I think he did an excellent job presenting the information in the ordinance. Um, this was very much a collaborative effort between my office, the city attorney, um, Parks and Recreation and the, and the police department. We were looking, taking a serious look at this and making these types of events in our community safe for everybody to attend. And we think we've come up with some, uh, a, a real good, uh, compromise that I think puts those standards in place so that, um, we make sure that people are, are protected and that we address the concerns that are out there without putting undue hardship or burden on any, any individual or business in the community. So with that, we'll go ahead and turn it back over to the city council. If the chief wants to say anything now, we can kind of hold off on those comments until after the public comment.
I have a little question. I have a little question.
Sure, you want to ask a question?
I do want, yeah. Um, what happens, uh, if someone has a party and they haven't filled out the permit? Let's say the chief goes somewhere and there's two hundred people having a rave someplace. Do they disperse it or what happens there?
Well, um, I think there's, there's a practical side to this. And not that we're discouraging people, we obviously want to encourage people to come in. But the reality is, is let's presume there's a private residence and there's a hundred and ten people at that residence and everything is running completely smooth. There's no, uh, traffic issues, uh, there's no fighting, there's no safety issues, there's no misuse of alcohol. The reality is, nobody is going to call the police. We're not going to respond to the event and there's not going to be a need for folks to just be driving around and, and counting heads and shutting down the event. However, if there is an event and we get a call because there's a problem and the chief or the, the officers show up and they find that they do not have a special event permit, then that would in fact be grounds to, uh, to shut that event down, to ask the, uh, ask the, uh, citizens to disperse.
Well, what I was thinking about mostly was complaints from neighbors and stuff. If you end up, I mean, unfortunately I had one of those going on with me for a couple of months where they were having major parties about three hours down from me. And so that's what I was concerned about. If you do get complaints from neighbors and there is a whole lot of them and they are carousing. Okay.
Want to wait for any other comments from council? Cause we have, I think, several people that'd like to speak. So we'll go through the public comments, uh, list. Thank you.
Sean Farmer?
Sean Farmer, I'm here actually on behalf of my family who owns the Escholita Ballroom. And there'll be others speaking, but I want to start it off. Um, first off, the last comment the city attorney made was kind of, kind of dictory. He's saying, well, you know, if you're having a party and it's great and everything's fine and probably not a need because we're gonna not respond. But if we do respond, you don't have a permit, then you may be in trouble. So I don't kind of understand that as a little bit kind of kind of dictory. Anyways, so how we interpret this is, and we actually had legal counsel look this over for us. Um, so how we interpret this is basically, in a nutshell, that this ordinance is to put in place a single person in the government to have sole authority to allow or inhibit the right of a business owner of a facility such as ours that regularly hosts special events to conduct regular business. A business that is operating under current laws or ordinances and has not broken any current laws should not be subject to oversight nor undue authority by any police agency or department. Under section nine thirty-eight, zero four zero of exemptions under this new ordinance, this section is arguable, a direct violation of the US Constitution which mandates the equal protection of, of laws to all citizens free of biased religion, et cetera. For the ordinance to exclude the specific businesses due to their government or city affiliation or religious association is a direct infringement of this right. Furthermore, some exceptions create a double standard in that the enforcing agencies, namely the city itself, are not required to abide by these same guidelines. Under section nine thirty-eight, zero five zero, under applications, this section refers to the application process in which all the forms, all forms of information must be given. Who's having the party, when, how, why, what, what kind of, uh, event it is and so forth. All must be disclosed as part of the application process. This to me is an infringement of privacy of a business owner and its clients. A citizen conducting a business on a privately owned property and abiding by existing laws should not have to disclose such information. We feel this information could influence the approval decision based on bias. For an example, if we submitted a form for a party that was going to be held by Jose Gonzalez, then the police chief might look at that and think, well, this might be a, a pose a high risk and because of that would fall under the grounds for denial and he could basically, um, decide that he wanted to deny that party based on that. So we feel that this information could create bias just based on what kind of party it is, who it is, you know, what kind of those things is just, we just feel like that information shouldn't be relevant. Number two, unrealistic timelines. The proposed ordinance would require an applicant to be submitted, an application to be submitted thirty days prior to the event. This is completely unrealistic due to the fact that many of our events are held in short periods of time or even last minute. For example, our facility has held gatherings for funerals at least nine times in the last year. These events are asked for within two or three days of the actual event. Furthermore, the approval can be delayed, according to the, the ordinance, the approval can be delayed up to twenty days, which means that we basically could be pushed off ten days prior to the, so we submitted an application thirty days prior to an event. The chief has twenty days to approve it, so ten days prior to the event. So we have family coming in for a wedding reception. They pay us a deposit, they rent a DJ, they get a caterer, they, they spend tons of money on these events. Some of our clients spend great deals of money, as I mentioned, and as notified by our attorney, if we were entering the contract to the client and then have the event disapproved, we could face legal recourse for breach of contract. And, and then we would have to then sought out recourse against the city. So it could be just a legal mess in that aspect. This would also, if we were to en- enter this into our rental agreements stating that there's a chance that it might be denied, then we would possibly deter people from even renting our facility and subsequently lose business. Under section nine thirty-eight zero seven zero, grounds for denial, this section basically sets forth the guidelines for which the chief of police can deny an event permit. These reasons range from pretty much everything you can think of and everything in between. This section is so vague and open to interpretation that may as well just say that its approval is to his discretion. In item B in this section, it states that if another facility has an event on the same night, that they could deny our facility. So basically, if the Grange Hall is having a party and then someone wants our date, they could say, well, the Grange is already having a party, so you can't have a party on the same night. So we're to get with the other facilities and try to compare schedules, and we're all going to be fighting over who gets what date, that's just going to be a mess. The next item C mentions that the event can be denied because of, quote, inadequate police services. This seems to always be the case. I mean, how are you ever going to deem that the services are going to be adequate not knowing what's to take place? We as taxpayers play, pay for police services. And the interpretation of the appropriate amount of staff could just be at the chief's discretion. It's just vague. You can say, well, we're, you know, we don't know if we're going to have enough, it's just, it's just so vague.
Mr. Farmer, your time's up. Thank you very much for your comments.
Next speaker.
Mary Chapman?
Hi, I'm Mary Chapman, and I belong to the Valley of the Grange. And I just want you all to know, I feel the same way Mr. Farmer does. I think your things that you're wanting to do is just a bunch of baloney. You've got no right to tell us what we can do in our building and who, who we can rent it to. Thank you.
Heather Farmer?
Hi, my name's Heather Farmer. I live within the city limits, and my family owns the Escherita Ballroom. Um, with the putting out of this ordinance, I feel personally attacked. I feel like the city has made every effort possible to make it hard for us to conduct our business, to push us out of our building. I know that, um, I hear rumors that there are people that have contacted either council staff who are interested in obtaining our building for other purposes. So, um, I guess to put an end all to all these rumors, I intend to go in and see the city clerks, request public records in any correspondences, of emails, anything back and forth between council staff, any outside persons, agencies regarding the building at four fifteen C Street and its surrounding retail space. I would just like to know if this is just another ploy to take what is ours. My family has owned that since seventy-four. My dad ran it the same way, he's still running it today. I intend for my children, my sister's children, to someday own the building that we do currently own. It will stay in my family, it's a very important part, it's always been a part of our family, and it's going to stay that way. So, thank you.
John Hinke?
Two years ago, we did this already. Two years ago, when the chief showed up, we had the same typical type of ordinance brought up before you guys again. And we fought and argued over that one, and I don't remember what we finally did, but I agreed with him at that time to drop my, to put every seventy-five people, to put one of my security staff on. And I'm bound by that rule, and I've been by that rule every night. I've had some people that's put parties in, almost over five hundred people. I've had very little problems. The only problems I've ever really had is noise. And I, my staff, we have become very aware of that, and so we've been fighting the issue with the bands, trying to keep the decimals down to at least ten or eleven, which is rather the other mile. But anyway, you know, I made some concessions when we did this last time, and I usually give them a call for what, what parties we're having, and I let them know what's going on. And we're pretty well self-contained. We really don't need you guys, we don't need the, we don't need the pres- we don't need the government backing our bucket again. I've owned this for a long time, I worked hard at this building, I've done a lot of donations, I do a lot of donations to different facilities and public people. And I, like Sean said, nine funerals. We don't make no money on funerals. I still pay my power bill, I still pay my, I still don't, you know, and with this hard economy times that it is right now, I really think you guys are trying to be anti people having parties in this town. Because if we start telling the people, well, now you've got to go down there and fill out a bunch of paperwork with the city before you can have a party, then people are going to look at us and they're going to go to the American Grange in Lodi, they're going to go to the Moose Hall up there, they're going to go to the two or three halls that they got in Sacramento. They won't be coming down from Sacramento and renting halls like they do now. We have a lot of quinceañeras, we have a lot of weddings, and we do a lo- really good job with people. And I'm just as hard on them, the renter, as I'm being on you. I think this is very unconstitutional. I really do. And, and if you approve this, I plan on taking it to court or do something else. That's the way I feel. You guys have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Asparta? Leslie Asparta?
My name is Leslie Asparta, and I'm a resident of Galt, and I'm with the Grange. And the way this is written, it does sound very frightening to, to a lot of people in this business because it's, it's just very detailed in, in what you can't do. And, uh, I, I just have some questions on how this is going to concern the Grange. We've been in Galt for a long time, we participate in, in a lot of different areas, we're in the community, we do scholarships, uh, I, most of you are aware of it here, most of you know us at the Grange. Uh, I think most of everybody he- here on the council has been to the Grange. I know Don has, Mary Lou has, Barbara has, Randy has, you know, and we do a lot of the volunteer work for, if, if South County Services needs volunteers, we, we, we do the volunteer work for it. And we do have events, we do rent out our building for income to help us do these community projects. So how is this going to affect the Grange? Can you help me in that? Explain, you know, you, you did a good job of explanation. So as long as we're not throwing big drunken wild parties, we're not going to be bothered. Is basically is what you, is that you're saying?
Well, what the ordinance would require is that if there's going to be an event at your facility that is going to be attended by seventy-five or more people, then it would be a requirement to get a special event permit.
And the requirement is basically on the renter to go get it from the city, right?
That's correct. But there's an opportunity for the, uh, the property owner to come in and get an annual permit that would cover, uh, all events for that year at the facility.
Okay, would that cover our private events and our rental grant events at annual?
It, it could cover all events at, at facilities.
All of the events?
Yes.
And we'd still, we'd still have to, uh, uh, follow, you know, of course, all your guidelines, right? And funerals, nothing was ever really explained on, on the funeral. When you say there's a certain period of time, uh, how would we handle the funeral?
For our reception.
I mean, would we have to tell them, no, you have to submit a permit? Or would we be able to set under that, our annual event?
Well, that'd be something that you'd be able to put under your annual event.
Under your annual event? Okay. Uh, and the insurance, there's no longer any insurance that the city would need.
That's correct.
But if these people want it, they have to show the police chief all the paperwork that they have, the insurance? I mean, would they have to provide that, or is that our responsibility to make sure they do it?
That would be your concern. If you want, uh, folks that are renting your facility to provide insurance or show insurance, that would be up to you. But the, the city would not require insurance, nor will we, uh, review insurance.
Well, it doesn't sound like you're really targeting the Grange at all, you know, and it sounds like you're just targeting loud, uncontrolled parties. Is that so?
That's-
Not trying to interfere with anybody's business?
We're trying to, uh, to focus on, on, uh, events that have the potent, potential to create traffic, safety, uh, concerns within the city, and to, uh, to provide some rules and regulations relating to those events to ensure that they were carried out in a safe and orderly manner.
Well, one of, one of the things I read was parking. How can we have self-contained parking? Our building wasn't built in an era, it was an old, it's an older building, it was built in an era where they didn't have self-contained parking. We use street parking. So how is that going to, how's that going to affect us?
I don't believe there's anything in here that requires self-contained parking for an event that would have, uh-
It does. So is that something that, that, how is that going to work? It can be denied on that per-
Excuse me, audience, I have a speaker, okay? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Leslie.
I, I had that marked on my other one where it was, but I don't have it on this one.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find that, I don't, I'm not finding it right away. I'll, I'll look at it.
It said that parking should be contained.
So where are you reading from, ma'am?
And if not, then you'd be required a permit.
What page is it in? I don't know.
Where are you, I think he's asking where you're at, Leslie. What page you, um-
Uh, I don't have the same paper I had earlier.
I'm sorry, I thought you had it highlighted.
I didn't highlight it because I don't have the same paper, but... Do you guys, anybody have that handy where it's at? Because that was the one that really concerned me, because we've never had on-property parking. We've always used the street, you know, as it's around too. Is it in the denial?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's necessarily onsite parking. I think that the, uh, the goal would be, depending upon the size of the crowd, uh, to understand, uh, how you would accommodate or would propose to accommodate the parking for folks attending the event. But I was not aware that there was a requirement for all parking to be onsite. I think that's a little bit different than, uh, uh, being concerned about traffic congestion.
So if there's stuff, because if there's seventy-five people come to, say, a, a Grange event, there's going to be approximately thirty, forty cars, maybe, maybe less. And would that keep us from having our events?
Yeah.
Say we were up to the total of seventy-five people?
Yeah. I'm not, you know, I'm sorry, I'm just not that familiar with your, you know, the size, size of your event, event, size of your property to be able to answer whether, whether or not, uh, um, that would be a concern or not. We'd really have to, have to look at it on the, uh, on the facts of the situation.
Yeah, because that could keep us from doing business, and that's kind of not what you should want to, you know, do because that's a livelihood for us. And we do have projects in the community that we work on, and we need income to do it.
One of the things you'd be able to do is if you came in for an annual permit, for example, we'd be able to address any traffic issues or parking issues that you might have. And so, uh, a facility of your size, I don't believe would generate, um, significant traffic concerns, but it's something that we would talk about and, and be able to address as part of that application process.
Uh-huh. Well, the city could build us a parking lot. They own the land across the street from us. You know, you can do that. Ride bicycles, skateboard.
Yeah.
No, well, that's, that's basically the main questions I had, you know, how is that going to affect the Grange? Uh, you know, if it's going to keep us from doing business, it couldn't be a good ordinance. It couldn't. You know, but if it's not going to affect us, then, then-
The intent of the ordinance is not to restrict people from doing business, it's just to put safeguards in place so when these large events do happen, to make sure that they're, they're conducted in an orderly fashion.
But the way it's legally written is very frightening. I mean, it sounds very constrictive. It's not in layman's terms, it's in legal terms, I understand. But in layman's terms, it sounds very constrictive.
Roy Johnson? Oh.
Are you putting a plug in now for an event?
Put the plug in, Leslie. Friday, the Grange is getting a rib dinner, barbecue rib dinner. Do I have five, my five minutes still?
Yeah.
Giving, uh, from five to seven, from five to seven. So if you want a good dinner, come down. Sunday, the Grange is volunteering to help the benefit that's happening at the Littleton Center from, I believe it's, uh, four to seven. So the Grange will be volunteering, they'll be running the bake sale table, so if you guys like good goodies from the Grange, come on down.
Thank you. Roy Johnson?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Oh, congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you, city council. My name's Roy Johnson, I'm the master of the Grange chair in Galt. And, uh, some of the things that I wanted to bring up is the fact that, uh, uh, we have a lot of events, uh, to nonprofit organizations. We either rent the hall at cost or free. And it considers our LaHeim Center, which is our women's shelter. Also, our, uh, uh, funerals have been, been there at free. We've also had, uh, uh, several weddings. We also have a marine youth group that attends there. We also have a square dance club that, that comes there. And we have, uh, Ed Walda, which is also a, a good organization that takes care of, uh, handicapped, special needs families. And, uh, and we let them have that at free. And, uh, one thing about the, uh, parking is the fact is that it is street parking, and it's, and it's, there's no traffic there that parking in hinders any traffic or any events around there that would hinder traffic. Uh, I'm speaking also for the other members here that are going to be talking, that, uh, we feel that, that, uh, the restrictions that you're putting on us is, is going to hurt our business or put us out of business. And, uh, I feel that one person alone should not have that kind of power. I believe it should be done with a quorum, just like everything else in a Robert's Rules of Order. And, uh, uh, because it's, it's creating a double standard, and that, that's my main concern. And, uh, I believe that there's going to have to be a permit acquired. I think we should have it done within five to seven days, as what Kevin earlier was speaking, is if, if we go down there, we get down to the last two or three days of the event, these people put out thousands of dollars for this event, they've given us some money to rent the event, and their deposits and everything, and then we say, oh man, I'm sorry, we can't do this, they take us to court, and then we're going to take you to court. And we're just going to keep it going forever and ever and ever. And it, and so I don't feel that this is something that should be, uh, uh, just pushed under the rug or, or even just, uh, poo-pooed because it's going to hurt everybody. And it's going to, and lines going to hurt you because the city of Galt is going to be included in the sto- in the, in the landslide. Uh, also, uh, uh, I have, uh, from here from, uh, our, uh, our Fourteenth Amendment, that, uh, in my closure, it was all that being said, we all as citizens just want to make it live for ourselves, free of too much government oversight. As business owners, we must just want to be allowed to conduct our business without constant intervention and red tape from our city governments. Every time I turn around, I hear stories from business owners about the difficulty of dealing with the city government, whether it's permits, codes, fees, et cetera. The city of Galt has been labeled by some as one of the most unfriendly environments. I have heard horror stories from businesses all over town, and even though some that are actually moved out of Galt to conduct business elsewhere, such as Algro. We want nothing more to continue our business than our hometown. The troubling thing is that many of our elected and even appointed leaders all talk of the same themes, to make Galt more business friendly and help promote local business more. But it was always told to me is talk is cheap, and our- told to me, is talk is cheap, and our leaders say one thing and then do another. Our city will bend over backwards to bring in big business at Galt and ignore the needs of existing businesses, sometimes even trying to pass legislation to hinder them further. All of us that own and operate event facilities want the same thing, to provide a safe, fun, and private place where our patrons can celebrate. We are all willing to sit down as a group with city leaders to discuss ideas and mutual ways to accomplish this. We can all agree, building healthy, healthy business relations system in our community would better accomplish in this fashion, instead of just shoving ordinances down our throat around every corner. Our forefathers came to this country for liberty and the idea of free enterprise. They left behind strict government control to institute a new idea. Sadly, I think after three hundred years, that the idea has been diluted. You as our city and government leaders have vested with a great responsibility. It's up to you to preserve the idea of free enterprise and liberty that we all cherish about our government, not the government oversight and control that our ancestors worked so hard to escape. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Con.
Hi, Mayor, council members in the community. Um, it was interesting, timing, to see, uh, Councilmember Powers say that she would uphold the United States Constitution, because I believe this is definitely a constitutional issue. The First Amendment allows us the right to peaceably assemble. And the definition, when you can restrict that right, it's, um, because of a threat to national security or public safety. So I understand the purpose is to make sure the public is safe. However, if you take a look at how things have been, um, described here, there are numerous events that would fall under the category of requiring a public, uh, a special use permit, a special event permit, that certainly could not be considered public, uh, safety risks. So I haven't had a whole lot of time to, to prepare my words tonight, but I want to tell you some of the events that I've been into, I've been to in the last year that would require a special event permit, and ask you to think about some of them that you've been to that would also require them. Um, one is a children's birthday party. I have been to lots of birthday parties where family members from all over the state or from out of state come and assemble on somebody who has some acreage. They certainly are not a threat to public safety, but they would require a, um, a special, um, event permit. Gosh, I'm really nervous. Sorry. Um, I have been to events with the Boy Scouts, where they have had gatherings of Boy Scouts, and they've been doing either work projects or service projects. That would require a special, um, permit. I have been to a funeral of a fellow Realtor. Sorry. I've been to more funerals than I would care to discuss. Not all of these are held at a religious organization inside their church. Not everybody has money to spend on a funeral. And sometimes these events are held in people's homes, and I do not feel that it's a government's place to tell them that they cannot have that event held in their home because they didn't have thirty days before their loved one died to get a special permit. I have been to wedding receptions at people's homes. I have been on Realtors' tours. I've been on open houses where we have more than seventy-five people. In fact, in some of those, we might have one or two Realtors per car. You're going to have traffic going down the street to the open houses. I don't think you should have to have a permit for these events. I understand the purpose that you want to keep people safe, but this is not a public safety issue when you consider how broad, uh, the description is for this. If you were, if you consider Fourth of July, your block party now has to have a permit from the city. I don't think that's right. I think that the Constitution is all that we need to peacefully assemble, and that's what I believe. Thank you.
Patrice Moreno?
I'm Ms. Shelton, Council. I'm Patrice Moreno. Um, I haven't been appearing so long, so I did a little thing. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm a resident of Galt, and I've been active in the community for many years. I have been a chairman of your Galt beautification committee, your graffiti task force. Um, I've held a seat on-site council for both your elementary and high school level. Um, I'm also currently on your JPA board and the chairman of your Lively Night's Christmas Parade. The reason I share this with you, I think that gives me the right to stand before you and share what my thoughts are. I am a local real estate agent and assisted owner in the local shopping center remodel on T Street this year. Um, I believe in our town. It's a great place to raise a family, and I cherish the small-town atmosphere. I, along with many of my peers, have tried to bring great things to Galt. I know that my Mayor Shelton and Vice Mayor Payne were recently had a guest at our ribbon cutting at the VIP event center, and along with the Chamber of Commerce members, so they are familiar with our center. This event center is a project that I thought of when my investors had two brand-new ten-thousand-square-foot buildings we couldn't sell. And other buildings surrounding us were closed, and others are still up for sale. The Valley's incredible place, AKA the VIP event center, is located on the west side of town in the industrial area where there's own light manufactured and entertainment. I shared with G and Z Properties my idea that they believe enough in our community to invest even more money than they already had invested. These buildings are worth over a million dollars each. We have hired local contractors. We use Galt Discount Flooring for our flooring. Giden Brothers put in our heating in there, and we offer jobs to local kids. So these are people who believe in this, our community, which bought into what's bringing great things to our community. We offer after-school programs, summer camps in our facilities to meet the needs of our local families. We no longer have a Boys and Girls Club in town, nor did we have a Summer in the Park for these kids this year. I have met with the elementary superintendent and our city manager to get support for the project, and we built it out from what was shared with us we needed. We offer themed birthday parties and over five thousand square feet of jumpers. The building is also for rent to the public. The proposed ordinance I read has me very concerned as a citizen, not even as an agent, trying to look out for my client's best interest. Because to open a new business and economy is hard enough with the city delegating new rules and honestly, to make it impossible for us to stay in business. If I read it right, these rules only apply to the private sector, correct?
They would only apply, apply to private property.
Per Section 9.38.020, Item G, person, correct me if I'm wrong, but that does mean any resident of Galt having a party at their residence would have to apply for a permit if they were going to have seventy-five guests. Because if that is correct, and we have already about ten families going to break the law on the first Saturday of the month in December, when the Christmas parade goes by their home. I'll tell you right now, people have their annual Christmas party that night, and some of their work Christmas parties planned around the parade route itself for all their guests to enjoy. National Night Out, you just recently had, you guys actually broke your own ordinance, because you had neighborhood parties that had over seventy-five people. The Fourth of July barbecues, like she mentioned, and neighborhood garage sales would also have to have a permit full, because if you take ten houses, and you all have your families out there, and you invite friends, put things up for garage sales, and then the public comes to your garage sale, you now broken the ordinance also. For garage sales, we'd have to apply for permit twenty days before the party or event. That could be a lot of unnecessary paperwork and manpower for the police department. Why do you not have to follow these rules you are putting down for us? Because, again, for a private sector, you guys shared with me that I think you're exempt to city and churches. And why do the churches get exemption? The cost of- no disrespect, Ms. [inaudible]. The cost of putting an event onto the public, such as the security, the booking, the DJ, the band, pay for advertising, and not going if you're in, may get denied because of Section 9.38.070, Item B. If you guys are paying these bills, I would have no problem with delegating this out, but you're not. And don't understand the stress it puts on us and now my neighbors. So, correct me if I'm wrong, if you don't follow the ordinance, then you are breaking the law?
Yes, it's adopting, yes.
Right. So you just mentioned that if you went to a party and there was more than seventy-five people, it's up to the discretion, if they didn't have a permit, you could continue that the party go on, correct?
No, if it's-
Or did I misunderstand you? I could have-
If the city was called to the event, and there was more than seventy-five people, and the event would be closed down.
So it would be, because I think I heard you say it would be at the discretion, and they could continue to have the party. So I think there's just, I, I'm bringing it, I mean no disrespect to anyone. I've been a team player all along. I've worked with the city. I applaud them. They're trying to help us get this project off the ground. It's taken us six months, a lot of money spent, and here I am sitting before you saying, "Throw me under the bus again, guys. Thank you." Um, so the citizens are going to be forced to drive out of town again for fun to the neighboring cities, because we can't afford to take the risk. I would like to know what, or who should we blame when our whole industrial park is empty and abandoned in Galt. Again, I don't mean to offend anybody, but I'm just bringing it to the table to say, maybe we need to rethink this.
Thank you, Patrice.
An ad hoc committee. Okay, sorry.
That's all the speakers. She's my house.
Okay.
Woody's recently sent.
Oh, okay. We have another member from Republic wishing to speak.
At Christmas time, I have over a hundred people in my house. Thanksgiving time, probably fifty. Now you're telling me that's not legal? That's what he just said.
No.
No.
He said you'd have to have a permit.
You don't have to have a permit?
No, he said you would, if you have over seventy-five.
That's ridiculous. I ain't buying one. You can call all these cops you want, but I'm not buying one.
That's all I have. Anyone else before we...
Okay. Public comment's over. Comments or questions from council?
I have a couple.
Right, ma'am.
Um, I thought one point was brought, well, there were a couple of points that were brought up that I think we need to think about. And one was the ten-day, um, well, the way I understood it, that you would have up till ten days before the event to deny it. Is that, that was sort of what I think people...
That is, that is correct. What's, what's provided in the ordinance is for, uh, the permit application to be filed thirty days before the event, and then within twenty days, a receipt of the, uh, application, the police chief would, uh, have to make a decision.
I would ask, um, the police chief or the city manager, is there a way that that could be happening faster? Because I can see the point that they, they made a good point when they said if people reserved a band or something, usually you have to do that thirty days in advance. And then if they were, um, denied ten days before the event, they would probably lose their deposit. So I guess my question is, is there a way that that could be, um, addressed?
I think the, the first thing is that people can come in and get a permit, well, in advance of thirty days. I think the minimum is thirty days. So if they come in advance sixty days, then they have twenty days. So then you have forty days before the event is the latest the chief could deny that. So the worst-case scenario is they come in at thirty days, the chief has twenty days to do that. But the, 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 um, individuals holding the party can come in six months, four months, whatever it is. And if there are kind of last-minute events like funerals that they're, they were spoken about, they can get, for these events that hold those types of events, for these, these facilities that hold those types of events, they could get an annual permit. So that would cover all funerals that they might, that, that might occur at that facility during the year. Then they wouldn't have to worry about timing or anything else. They would have a permit in place. They would say, "If you have this event, here's the types of things that, that you're gonna be, um, required to comply with, and then you're free to have those as often as you like during the year." And so that would address some of those concerns.
Okay. So that, and that was the other question about the funeral. But what I hear you say is that can be covered by the annual, uh, permit.
That's correct. And for any type of event, if they have weddings or other things that have the sa- similar type of things during the year, they can get one permit at the beginning of the year. And that would cover all those events that they have during that period of time that says, "Here's the types of things. If you have this event, here's the types of things you have to, you have to take care of. You have to take care of, um, making sure that if, you know, up to so many people with alcohol, you have to have security. Or you have to address traffic issues." Whatever the, the conditions are, doesn't have to be just for every single event. That's obviously gonna be a lot of paperwork, burdensome on some of these facilities. So our encouragement would be to come in advance and to work out the details. That way during the year, you, you, you can ha- hold the events that you need to hold during, you know, at, at that time.
Okay. There's also a provision that says the chief may consider applications received for special events to be held sooner than thirty days if he or she deems it administratively practical. So basically, if the application's submitted, and it's less than thirty days, and it's the type of, uh, application that he can, uh, can process, there's nothing that precludes him from taking the application and, uh, and issuing the permit.
My impression is that this is a very reasonable, uh, ordinance. And, you know, there's no fee, there's no insurance. Um, it seems like they're trying to bend over backwards to make it work. And if I could finish, uh, so that it's not gonna prevent you from having your events. I think that, uh, one of the things that the city has demonstrated is its ultimate concern for safety. That's why you passed Measure R. And I think that's where this is going. It's not to keep you from, from, um, having your events. I think we all realize what you contribute. I'm speaking specifically, or especially to the Grange. We know what you contribute to the community, and I don't think, I can't imagine any of us or the staff wanting to, uh, do anything that would hurt you on that. Uh, and I think, really, until you sort of get into this, and I think there's a lot of fear of what might happen, uh, I mean, we are your government. If you don't like what we're doing, you can come back and say so. Um, I, again, I think what we're trying to do is protect the people. And I, I know you have that same concern. Uh, frankly, I'm surprised at how, how unrestricted this could be. And then everyone is saying, "Well, it's up to the one person to decide." There is, there is an appeal to the council, if that's necessary. And I would think that if it happened too often, then the whole situation would have to be addressed reali- realistically. Um, so those are my comments, Mary Chapman. If, if it's okay with me, if it's okay with the mayor.
Wanna come back up and speak? That's fine.
I kinda think that we have a police department to take care of things if something goes wrong. That's what they're paid for, if they're called and they, we need their help. But for the, for the city or just the police chief to tell me that I can't rent my hall to somebody, I hate to use the kind of language I'm thinking of, but it's just a bunch of baloney. And you have no right to tell people whether they can have a party at the hall or they can. It's just, you just don't have that right. And it's like Mr. Farmer said, if it's a cinseñera, and they think, "Oh, no, no, this is gonna be a wild drunken party," so they can't have it. That's none of your business. If they do something wrong, then the police can come in and take them to jail or do whatever they want to with them. It's just you saying ahead of time that they can't do it isn't right. Because if that doesn't happen, then there won't be a Grange Hall, because that's how we make the money to keep the upkeep on our building and trying to repair it and make it a better place than what it is right now. And if we don't, can't rent to anybody, then we're out of luck.
Why would you not be able to rent just because someone had to pull a permit?
Because if they have to get a permit, and if you, it goes to the police department, and the police chief says, "Oh, no, this is a cinseñera," and I know that's a drunken brawl, so I'm not gonna okay it. Then you gotta come to the city council or whoever it is, and they say, "Oh, well, the police chief already said you can't have it," so no, you can't have it. So we've lost, uh, rent. And then it's too late for me to put somebody else in there. So, I mean, I just think you're overstepping, you're, you don't have the right to tell me who I can rent to and what kind of party's gonna be. I don't- and saying it's for the safety of the town, that's a bunch of baloney. That's just crap. That's all there is.
Thank you. Well, you know what? Wait a minute. Why don't we hear from the rest of the council members now, okay? Because we have been very courteous, I think.
[inaudible]
Council members. Any other comments?
Um, just a few. You know, I mean, there's some good issues that were brought up here. And I do have some concerns about the way it's written, so I wanna get some clarity on this. Because there are certain parties, and I had these concerns before any of you spoke tonight. But you do have open houses. You're gonna have Fourth of July. I know that we've had block parties. Um, even this year, I've been to a few graduation parties where there were over a hundred people that assembled. And one of my concerns is, is that a lot of these people aren't going to take the initiative to get the permit, and therefore, we may be discriminated against one group over another, and that concerns me. And I wanna be fair and equitable to everybody who's concerned. Those are some of the things that concern me. And I wanna be fair and equitable to everybody who's concerned. Those are some of the things that concern me. Um, the issue of the funerals and some of the other parties that they've talked about, and speaking of the Grange, um, I didn't read anything there, by the way, that would, which, that required, uh, any certain parking. It was just, I believe it all only had to do with circulation. But I don't wanna get ourselves in a position to where, um, we might deny somebody a permit and then be challenged on it in court. So I think I'd like to get a little bit more clarity as what we're really asking here. I think the thirty days might be a little bit too much, because I think you may have special events that people may try to put on in a much shorter period of time. And it does say that it is in the discretion of the chief of police. He can do it in a shorter period of time. And it does say that in there, and I understand that. And I understand the spirit of the ordinance is to help increase public safety. But I do have some of those concerns over those issues. Uh, another thing is, um, if the chief isn't available, if he's on vacation or something should occur, should we have something in the print that says, uh, either the chief and/or his designee or somebody he... There should be somebody in there who would, if he's not available, that should be able to approve these.
If he, if he's gone for an extended period of time, he would, he would designate somebody to act in. He would have the authority to act in, in the chief's name.
So...
The ordinance also provides that he, uh, can, uh, appoint a designee.
Okay. So I do have some concerns about, you know, the various groups that might apply for, would be required to expect, or be expected to apply for these permits. So I have some issues with the restrictions. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Maryland?
Okay, I have a couple of thoughts too, and, and this is not to, uh, alienate anybody, but, you know, I've been to parties, and I've been to birthday parties, and I've been to quite a few things. I seriously think that there should be, you know, noise and alcohol are the two big problems. I think there should be different provisions for somebody that's serving alcohol than somebody that's not, and I'll tell you why. Um, and, and something also, and I hate to keep boxing this in smaller and smaller, but, you know, time of day and stuff is kind of important too. So, uh, you know, I'm not asking you to really make it smaller. And, but, you know, I've been to the Grange, and, you know, I've been to some of the lunches they have on Sat-, you know, Sunday, and they don't, they're not serving alcohol, and there's seventy-five people there, and they're all over sixty. So, you know, I, I, I don't wanna sound discriminatory, but I think that, uh, alcohol and noise is one of the biggest problems. Also, security. I've been to places where my drunken brother Bob's got his security T-shirt on, and he's security. So I'm real concerned about security, you know, and I think that is important. Drunken brawls need security, you know, and they need good security. And so that's what I think about that. Um, another thought I have, and, you know, like I said, some of the things that, sometimes you see things that you're just quite not getting, and, you know, like a birthday party. You know, it's great to have a birthday pa- party for thirty kids, but not thirty kids and a hundred of their brothers and sisters and aunts and uncles and everything that are gonna like party all day and party all night on alcohol. So I, I'm still thinking that, you know, alcohol should be the main concern, you know, and, um, security. There's gonna be a lot of alcohol. Somebody's gotta be keeping an eye on people, 'cause we know how all of them get. So that's just kinda my thoughts.
Okay. Well, I think the intent was overall public safety, you know, fire, panic, uh, that was the concern. Uh, listening to council and listening to the public, uh, and right after the second person spoke and staff, I think what, uh, my feelings are that I think we need to have maybe another meeting is my recommendation to discuss this maybe a little more. So is, would there be a way that we could agree to continue this? And I, I know our intent was to try to pass this tonight, and this is just my thoughts. It's not really a motion. I wanna see how council feels about it. But I understand, you know, your concerns from the public and from the businesses. And it sounds like maybe, uh, that we did not, maybe we failed to communicate what the issues were or what... And I know some of you, we have talked to you over the past, a couple of people got up and said, "This came up like, I think it was two and a half years ago when I wasn't on council." But, uh, overall, it's, you know, public safety with police, and I, and I know that when you rent these facilities, that that is your concern too. So, uh, I believe that we should set up a meeting, and I don't wanna throw staff under the bus here, but I mean, I would as a, as the mayor, I would be able to sit down with the business owners and the operators, or we would have another meeting. And if you wanna do it as a mayor's forum, then we will. I got big, I've, I got broad shoulders, just no hitting real hard, okay? Those are my suggestions, but I'd have to have, uh, you know, council, uh, would have to agree or not agree.
I would agree with that. I think it'd be good to have their input. Uh, there's some issues here that need to be cleared up, but the intentions are most certainly honorable. Um, and it, you know, it is public safety issues, so I think that'd be an excellent opportunity to kind of work out some of these issues and, and address them and give them a say-so, some input.
And if another council member wants to do it, or, you know, conjunction with me as the mayor, that's fine too. I will go with the wishes, 'cause I think we all had, all four of us seemed to have, you know, some questions on it. So, uh, what, Don, you're kinda agreeing with me, but...
If you can give me a specific day and time, hopefully within thirty days.
Well, I mean, we are on public safety, but I have to see what other council members feel.
I wouldn't mind coming to it either. I'd like to see, let's say one out here.
Well, if we can do two.
Oh, two, okay, forget it.
If we do three. So, uh...
Yeah, I think it'd be, I think it'd be a good opportunity.
There's a little sexist with both men doing it. I'm just kidding.
I don't think it's gonna get passed tonight, so I'm just trying to find a, an avenue here.
Well, whether it's gonna get passed or not, I don't know. But one of the things I was wondering, do we have any other, uh, cities that have similar ordinances? That we could...
Examples?
Yeah, there are. Yes, there are other cities, and I can research that further and provide information back to the council.
Did you wanna make a comment, Jason? No? I'm sorry.
Any personal action from the city council?
Right. I know. You haven't really got that yet, I don't believe.
I could tell you, I was surprised that there wasn't an ordinance here when I saw that this was on.
No, that's true. That's true.
You know?
Okay.
Oh. I said I was surprised, but I didn't, I didn't think that there was an ordinance. But I was just corrected that there is one, but I guess it's being...
Doesn't apply to private facilities.
Oh, it doesn't apply to private facilities.
Public. Public facilities.
I'm fine with...
It doesn't apply to private facilities, so this is a new one to private facilities, I'm understanding.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm fine with, with, um, you and councilman meeting, excuse me, with the people, because I think a lot of it is not understanding. I think a lot of it needs to be clarified. I heard Leslie up here talking and asking questions, and we found out, well, funerals would be covered. You know, you just get one at the beginning. So I'm thinking a lot of this needs to be clarified, and there's a lot in this. And, um, I think it would be worthwhile to, you know, say, "Okay, so-and-so had a question. Here's, here it is in the, in the ordinance. Here's the answer to that," which we can't do in this kind of a forum. So I would be fine with, uh, the mayor's suggestion to meet with these people.
Okay. With that said, I would direct, uh, actually, uh, Jason, uh, yourself and whoever you feel is appropriate. Uh, maybe in the next few days, Don and I could meet with you first, and we could, you know, I don't wanna wait, you know, three or four weeks. No one wants to do that. And I believe that it's just a matter of explanation, you know, what the intent is, and maybe, you know, in a smaller environment, and I'm not trying to hide anything. You guys know that. But I think just sitting down and discussing some things. Okay? So you get back to... Sure, with Don and I.
All right, that'll work.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
We'll meet first. Okay. All right. So this item, we're just going to bring back then. Okay?
Next item, an ordinance of the city council, City Galt repealing and readopting Chapter eight point four zero of the Galt Municipal Code regarding noise control standards.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just as a point of clarification on the last item. It's not, my understanding is that it's not necessarily continued to the next meeting that will have the discussion with, uh, the people in the community that are interested, get that input. Then depending upon what kind of revisions may be appropriate, then we'll bring it back, uh, in a timely manner, but not necessarily...
Not necessarily in the next council meeting.
Is that, is that the council's desire?
That was what I wanted to do, but you're right. I don't think you got that clarification. Is that okay with council?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay, the, um... The next, uh, the next ordinance that is proposed for your consideration this evening is the city's noise ordinance. And, uh, this particular ordinance has not been updated since nineteen eighty-seven. And as currently written, the administration for this ordinance is tasked to the Sacramento County Health Officer. And in the event that there is, uh, a, an appeal or a variance, uh, desired from a decision of the Sacramento County Health Officer, it's supposed to go to a, a joint body of, uh, a joint hearing body composed of, uh, members of the Sacramento, I think Sacramento City Council and Board of Supervisors. Um, the other problem with this current ordinance that there, and frankly, what brought this, uh, this issue to light is that there's no exemption in this ordinance for public works, construction, uh, jobs. And the Public Works Department was looking to figure out what kind of process would they go through in order to get an exemption from the current, uh, the current ordinance. And as you may be aware, just from, uh, driving ninety-nine and fifty, a lot of construction work these days is in fact done at night. Uh, in fact, when it's, uh, done in the Caltrans areas, is oftentimes required to be done at night. So one of the other issues is the, uh, is the fact that there's not an exemption for public works, construction projects. Um, so what, uh, what is proposed this evening is a, is a rewrite of the noise ordinance that provides for local administration of the ordinance through the, uh, Community Development Director. It further provides for appeals of any decisions by the director to the city council. Um, there are some archaic and, uh, unneeded provisions that have been removed from the ordinance. We endeavor to try to simplify it. And then in particular, we provided an exemption for, uh, public works projects, which is under Section zero-six-zero, uh, K. Now, this exemption does not necessarily mean that there's not gonna be any noise restrictions on, uh, public works projects. It just means that they're not gonna be subject to this particular ordinance. And to the extent that the city council, uh, or the public works director, uh, believes that there are, uh, noise controls that are necessary for public projects, the council can deal with those on a project-by-project basis. Those projects always come before you for, uh, for, public works projects come before you for award anyway. So there is an opportunity to control those on a project-by-project basis. So, um, that's the proposed ordinance. I don't know if, Kurt, do you have anything additional that you wanted to add? The standards do not change as far as the, the levels of noise that are allowed within the community. Uh, those, those standards remain the same. I think answering questions.
Um, is there any comments from the public? Yeah.
My guy, the General Park Company, uh, I know this is for public service, but as you know, and I'm hoping one of these days, and which might be a couple of years from today, but we might build a house, and during the summertime, we like to start because of the concrete. It was, it's really important that you pour concrete when it's halfway decent with weather-wise and not, let's say, a hundred or a hundred and five degrees. So you always try to start as early as possible. So we would like to be able, be able to start, we used to be able to start in Elk Grove, for example, at six o'clock under the temperature and so on and so forth. And I don't know if that's in the ordinance or not, but we would like to try to have that someplace that we would, uh, 'cause I thought we could only start at seven. We can start at six o'clock?
On weekdays at seven on weekends or Sunday.
I'm sorry. It's, uh, six o'clock, uh, on, and that hasn't changed. It's always been six o'clock here during the week and seven o'clock on weekends.
Okay. Now that's good, 'cause that's, that's really important for us. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public regarding this? From the council?
I have none.
No, not me either.
It's good.
I have no comments either. So do we need to, um...
Um, the recommended action this evening would be to introduce the ordinance, uh, repealing and readopting Chapter eight point four zero of the Galt Municipal Code regarding noise control standards. Wait for the reading of the ordinance and continue the matter to the next regular meeting.
And I'll stay so moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussions?
None.
Then we will call for the vote.
Let's hear it, Pam.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hane.
Aye.
Councilwoman Power, sorry. Mayor Sutton.
Aye. I was outside in the foyer area, so I heard everything. Next item?
Next item, under City Manager's Office, Associate Planner and Senior Planner Job Description Modification.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Before each night is requested to make changes to the structure of the planner series within the Community Development Department. It's, um, staff's recommendation that you approve the proposed job description of Associate Planner and Senior Planner, and to abolish the current separate job descriptions. Um, with that being done, the job titles of the currently filled position and vacant frozen position would be changed. They both would, um, be the Associate Planner slash Senior Planner. Uh, in addition, it would bring consistency within the city's job series, series with the cities such as Engineer, Office Assistant, and Accounting Assistant, and other similar positions. Um, please note that each employee in any of these positions, um, will only occupy one level of the position. So even though they're both on the same job description, employee would only occupy one, um, level. Employees are promoted based on the needs of the department, the employee's experience, and the gain level of responsibility as they work through the series. The staff is also requesting an appropriation so the Community Development Department can promote the city's current Associate Planner into the position of Senior Planner. As stated in the, uh, staff report, the individual has the qualifications and the experience that meet the senior-level requirement. Um, this appropriation amount is the total cost of the employee's additional salary and salary-driven benefits through the end of fiscal year, June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. And, um, let's see, if these recommendations are approved, there would still be one Associate Planner, Senior Planner frozen in the Community Development Department, and that position would remain frozen until future council action. So I have, if you have any questions, or Community Development Director might be able to answer questions.
Comments from council?
I had a hard time understanding this one, and I did get some clarifications, but I think for the benefit of everybody, maybe we'll go over it again. Um, what you're proposing is though to keep the position of Associate Planner, but it'll be frozen. And then, uh, the Senior Planner is actually a step above, but you're combining the two.
Well, we're combining on the job description, but they are separate levels. So basically what we're doing is we're wanting to flip-flop the Associate with the Senior. The Senior is currently, I mean, the bottom line, basically, is the, um, Senior is currently frozen in the budget, and we would like to have, um, the current incumbent be promoted to the Senior position.
Okay.
Um, the job title would slightly change, 'cause it's Associate slash Senior. Um, but that's how it is listed on other, um, if you look at Schedule Six in the budget, you can have an Accounting Assistant one slash two, but funded in the budget would only be a one. So what would happen is the current frozen position would be listed as an Associate slash Senior Planner, um, and there's no money in the budget for that, but it could be future funded at either level.
So basically what you're doing is creating a promotion.
You're promoting an employee.
We're promoting our incumbent that has been, you know, working at the Associate level, that has now met the requirements and the level of responsibility at the Senior level. We just thought we would combine the job description just because it seems to flow better. Um, it, it adds more flexibility for the department. It gives a career path for that Planner position. But it's not imperative... that planner position, but it's not imperative that you change the job description. We could keep it then separate and then, but still make the changes with the budget positions, and then promote our current employee.
No, I'm- I'm okay with what you propose, it's just trying to understand it, and I would also add that I- I think if we have an employee that deserves a promotion, it's this young man, uh, he has done so much for our department, and even though we're in a economic situation here where, you know, we have furloughs, we have budgets that we have to watch, I think, uh, had it been structured differently, he would've been able to get this increase automatically. So, I would- I would be in favor of it. I would support it.
Okay. Council?
Yeah, I think this is becoming more and more common, where you've got people taking on added responsibilities, taking on the job of others, and they are merging, uh, positions together. So, with the added responsibility and- and everything else that goes with it, I- I would be comfortable in supporting it.
Me too. When you freeze one job, somebody's gotta do two, so I'm very comfortable with that also.
Okay, good. I agree. Okay. Any other questions? If not, uh, we're gonna need a motion.
A move to, um, approve the recommendation.
Okay, yeah, one and two. Okay. Motion's been made, and is there a second?
Second.
No further discussion, or, I'm sorry, is there further discussion? No. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye.
Communications? No communications. We will adjourn to redevelopment agency. Uh, redevelopment agency, roll call, please.
Board members Payne? Here, Haynes.
Stepped out.
Powers? Here. Shelton?
Here.
Sorry, didn't see you.
Yeah. Other comment?
I have no speaker seat.
We have a couple of consent agenda items. If you would read those off, please.
Sure. Uh, two items. The first one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of August fourth, two thousand ten. And number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrant.
Okay. Any questions or comment? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second. No further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes? Councilmember Powers? Aye. Mayor Shelton?
Aye. That's three of them.
Okay. Adjourn and reconvene to the galt city council. City clerks report.
Just a couple reminders, excuse me, uh, the measure our Oversight Committee will be meeting, will be having a special meeting at six P.M. in the Police Community Room on August eighteenth tomorrow. On August twenty-sixth, the Commission on Aging will meet at five fifteen in the California Room at the Parks and Recreation Office Department. On October sixth, we have a holiday, Labor Day, the city offices will be closed, and that brings- did I say October?
Yes.
I'm looking at September, I don't know why I said October. So, on September sixth, city hall will be closed in honor of Labor Day, and then we will have a meeting the next day on September seventh.
Okay.
I'm jumping ahead.
Missing a month there, wasn't I?
Yeah, I know. They do go by fast enough. I'm timing the holiday.
Yeah, I hear ya.
Comments by staff? Uh, any comments by staff?
Uh, no. No comments this evening.
Are you leading the row and telling them no? We wanna get out by ten, right?
Hey, we're doing pretty good.
Nine-thirty? Uh, I think we're- we're past that. Okay. Comments by city council members? Vice Mayor Payne?
I would just, uh, first of all, wanna thank galt PD cadets for coming out to the farmer's market and fingerprinting and entertaining the young ones, as well as James Gus Miller for bringing out his many, many cars for hot August nights, and all the people that came out to support the farmer's market. Thank you very much. And come back this Thursday.
That's right. Councilmember Haynes?
Well, I'd like to keep it simple. I'd like to thank Mary Lou or congratulate Mary Lou for being appointed to council, welcoming her, and, uh, look forward to working with her.
Councilmember Powers?
Thank you, and we have worked together before on major art.
We have, among other things.
Among other things. Nothing for me.
Oh, okay. Thought you were gonna start.
No.
Well, I wanna thank everyone tonight and for your patience, and I hope everyone has a great week. Uh, we will adjourn, what time?
Nine-thirty-eight.
Nine-thirty-eight. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Wow, that's a great thank you for everything we had on the agenda.
We didn't have a restricted lunch in our parks, you can't have a lunch. There could be some parties, but the only part I'm eating, I wanna talk to for a minute. You're good, but the only thing that's something they're bringing in, they have to.
No, Chris, uh-
No, you make a good point. But a lot of everything is really, like, we can hold it for hours.
The other part is not off very much.
But, um, oh, you're good at a point.
No, I can't get out. It's such a-
People are on there, and they're going to be like-
Forget about that. When we actually do it, how are you doing the, uh, life?
Really? Yeah, and it is important to be part of, for the first fifty years, if you're left out somewhere. Dude, that's pretty well addressed. I get to be speaking, but a bit of my experience became, uh, so broad. I think you need to try, I don't know. If you really need to work out a little bit more.
Right.
And that's what I was like. I'm now graduating, so I mean, I think you'd be at a party, I think you're supposed to be gay. You're gonna have fun, and then they're not gonna wanna be, um, hypnotized, but I'm just like, I'm just like-
Thank you, darling. Are you gonna miss me? You're not having meetings, so how can you miss me when I won't go away?
Now you get to see more.